I was told at seven o'clock, we're gonna, we're gonna dance that one in a couple of minutes. Called it or the planning commission regular meeting for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'd ask the clerk to call roll, please.
Anderson?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
You're here.
I'm here.
Here. Definitely quorum, full house. Great, thank you. Everyone has in front of them the agenda and the packet has been prepared for tonight's meeting. Any comments on the agenda? Any additions? If none, so like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Moved by Don, second by Gardner. It's the first, first vote, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, we see none. Also in your kits was the minutes from our last meeting held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Did everyone have an opportunity to read through the minutes? Is there any comments or corrections or things that we would like to have added? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
To approve the minutes from the May eighteenth meeting.
Second.
Moved. And seconded, with first vote would be, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Next, we move to our public comments section. This first public comment section is for agenda items only. So if you are in the room or online and you would like to address this, please come up to the podium, give us your name and where you reside, and tell us which agenda item you would like to be speaking. And if you could, just keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone in the room seeing none, anyone online seeing none, that will conclude the first public comment of the evening. Yes. Moving through.
On a roll.
Next item on business is all business. And I think for this, I don't know if Holly or Ryan want to take it, take the lead, but it's to give us an update on the short-term rental task force.
I, I think you're very capable, uh, chair of your task force would be great to kick it off.
And then Ryan can keep me honest. Um, we had a good meeting, uh, this afternoon. We, as some of you, I know Anne saw in the commercial record, we wrote, um, a letter updating, um, the community about where the task force is in the process and inviting them to engage in how they can do that. We're still in, in the assessment process, kind of moving into the engagement process. At today's meeting, we, uh, looked at, oh, wrong venue. Um, we looked at, recommendations from McKenna on community engagement. They recommended, and there was consensus among the task force to go to get them to take it to a more formal proposal, but to do a town hall, um, that will let people, um, have more dialogue with task force members and also have some boards where they can, you know, kind of agree or disagree, but a, a more engaging forum. We also are going to do our second Thursday of the month meetings from five to seven so that people who work traditional working hours can get at least to most of those meetings, and that provides more opportunity and then do a survey. So the next step will be for them to come back to us with, you know, more meat on the bones on what the, that will look like, including survey questions and what the town hall boards would say. So feel good about that. We talked, they also had some proposals for providing with us some additional data. And, um, we had some discussion around, you know, really what do we need? I mean, you know, certainly we could, we could do a lot. They offered some things that I think the task force didn't feel like was critical for us to do the work, plus it was a little pricey. So we did ask them to focus more on some communities that are similar to us that have already put in place changes, whether caps or other significant changes a few years ago. And actually, I credit Steve with this idea, where we can see sort of where they were, what they did, and then a year, two years, three years later, you know, sort of what they experienced, both intended and unintended. And I, I think we all felt that that would be valuable to our, um, discernment process. And then also get some more data, excuse me, on short-term rental, um, rates or, or, um, levels in other communities, so we can kind of see how we fit into sort of the bigger picture. So again, they will bring us back, um, some recommendations. They're gonna follow up with Ryan, um, to, you know, kind of make sure we're, we're going on a good path with that. We reviewed, and if, um, if you're interested in seeing it, it's in the, the meeting packet for today's meeting. All of the task force members provided sort of what they think the positives and negatives and opportunities are for short-term rentals. And McKenna aggregated that into one document. It's, you know, going to be a living document, so you can take a look at that if you're interested. And I think that was, those were the highlights, Ryan.
Yeah, I would say, uh, yeah, a few extra, uh, items there. The, uh, task forces, you know, asked for similar data that, that you kind of asked for. They would, uh, they kind of wanted to take a look at, you know, how does, uh, the number of short-term rentals break down by zoning districts? They can kind of have an idea of what they look like in our residential zoning districts, how many are in our commercial districts. Uh, there's interest in looking at, uh, short-term rentals by, uh, their occupancy, uh, uh, numbers as far as Mac, Mac occupancies. We're working on, or McKenna's working on kind of, uh, I've aggregated the data from what we have in our system, but they're working on kind of mapping that out and, um, compiling that. Uh, and there's also been some interest in looking at, um, how many properties in the city, um, that are short-term rentals have principal resident exemptions. Uh, our assessor actually was there today to answer, uh, a question related to how, uh, the P R E's work um, in relation to short-term rentals. Uh, and then at the last meeting, um, uh, the task force, uh, went over kind of enforcement analysis as far as noise has been a very common, uh, concern that a lot of folks have raised in their public comments. Certainly the short-term rental task force numbers identified that. So the sheriff's office was there to, uh, kind of present on, uh, how they've handled noise complaints. We took a look at how many formal noise complaints with an actual complainant the city's had over the last few years, and we're able to take a look at how many of those were actually, uh, short-term rental units. I touched on kind of the city's efforts over the last few years as far as city council in twenty twenty-one establishing an actual like investigation, uh, fee and, and policy, um, as far as, you know, uh, what that, that, that process should look like and, and updated the task force that, uh, Kate White, when she was here as a project coordinator, actually, um, did a lot of proactive enforcement, um, and actually going through a lot of online, uh, uh, listings. Take a look at which ones are registered, which ones weren't, um, and did a lot of, uh, proactive work to try to bring a lot of them into compliance. And then since I've been here, I've been working to try to clear up a lot of our holds that are, uh, in place, uh, that kind of, and then certainly getting ahead of folks that are gonna be expiring to let them know, hey, you're gonna be expiring soon, and then please apply so that we can avoid, um, uh, certificates, uh, lapsing if they want to continue on. Um, McKenna's done bought for some community comparisons, um, for various communities and taking a look at kind of what short-term rental regulations they have, uh, on the books. Other than that, I think we tagged him good and covered it, so.
Yeah, I had forgotten about the, that we had two meetings.
To me, yes, yep.
So thank you for just not busting me on that.
Yeah, I think that's, it's very good. And sitting on the task force, I can say that it is moving forward, and we are starting to see that a lot of the task force members are focused on the next step and want to really start talking about what are some of the ideas. And so I think that Holly's done a great job and Ryan and the team. Yes, absolutely.
When are you thinking about in terms of the town hall meeting?
We aren't to that point yet, knowing that it's a really busy time, um, but hopefully maybe July, probably more likely August. Yeah, probably.
Yes, yeah. Only because we're talking about having the next meeting, it's survey questions for the task force to review that our next meeting is the first Thursday in July. And then, once we determine that, you would probably try to set a town forum. July would be better than August, but it's probably real, realistic.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
And, and if I may, a related question, um, when it was initially with us, I think there was some discussion about multiple forums where, for example, and if, so, for example, I'll just make it easy, pros and cons, people would each have an opportunity to rather, and now I heard that maybe some people didn't want any forum at all, which then leads to the fact that there may be, it's only gonna be one town hall. So I, I, I wonder if, and, and I, I, my, my, where I'm going with this is, A, if it turns out to be packed, is there an option for a second one? And B, I would hate to feel that someone who felt one way or the other would feel intimidated to stand up and express their opinion if the ten people before them had all stood up and expressed the opposing opinion. And I would really think that if it were segregated, that, uh, in some way, that, um, it would allow people who, uh, have an opinion to feel confident and be able to stand up without, as I said, feeling intimidated or otherwise negatively impacted and just staying, keeping their butt in the seat or not showing up at all.
I think we can structure it that way. I, I agree, Mark, that we need to, one, it's just hard to follow a thread if, you know, the topic changes every time. So if we focus on, you know, the positives in one section and then move to people's concerns and what opportunities are, I think similar to what the task force has done, it does allow a, a kind of a constant conversation and dialogue versus, you know, ping ping across the room. And I also think if, if it's a, you know, a full town hall and we think we need more, I will, I mean, I, I think we should do more. I mean, um, I mean, I know that Steve and Ryan and I have talked about the only way we can totally screw this up is to not listen to people and not demonstrate that we're listening to people. So, um, I think we, we, we definitely have a commitment to do at least one and to do a survey to move the meeting times so that more people can attend. And then I think, um, just keep our eye on it, and if we need to do more, do more.
I, I would hope that a lesson was learned from, um, the situation involving the discussion around the moratorium, that, uh, if we could avoid, packing the room or raising hysteria or any of those kind of things, if we could keep it, um, truly open to people and, um, friendly, accepting, uh, inclusive, um, instead of, um, something otherwise, I think that would be a real benefit to the whole process.
And Mark, I think one of the things that's being discussed for the forum, that at least I like the idea, I think I got the feeling other task force did, was they were discussing about having boards up in the room that if I, like, if you go through the packet and you see what we've kind of listed as positives of short-term rentals, issues related to short-term rentals, opportunities of things we should consider, whether it's new regulations, whether it's new enforcements, whether it's new, you know, requirements for things to be posted in homes. And then the idea was they had those on the boards, and as everybody came into the forum, they would be giving us a patch, a number of stickers. And they would then go to the boards and kind of look at them, and they could add a sticker saying, oh, I think this is a really good idea that you should consider. I like, so even if people didn't get up and speak, there is a way that if we've all of a sudden we had eighty stickers on the one that said, I think we need, you know, to consider, you know, just pick one of having every requirement, everyone has to have a good neighbor policy. Or you've got sixty stickers on the one that said, you can't list your home on VRBO without listing the license number that's issued by the city of Sagatuck. So that that way we know that they actually have a license to be listed on those, on those websites. If, you know, so all of a sudden we see like seventy people like that one, then it kind of gives the task force also some guidance as to what they feel is most important. And the, and the survey will be designed in the same way where it asks them to, you know, to kind of highlight. So, you know, without having to have everybody come up, because there was also talk of, you know, having it more like they did with the bike trail, where it's just an open forum, and you have stations, and people move through stations, and they share their thoughts without it actually coming up to a microphone. So there's several different ways it could be done.
Yeah, and I, and I will flush that out. The other thing we talked about, or McKenna recommended that I thought was really smart, is to have the task force members stay after the meeting so that they can also have one-on-one conversations with people, so that, so I think we'll, um, be flushing that out, but Mark, I think everything you've said is smart.
Very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the?
Yeah, Chairman Mans, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Uh, I want to kind of build on what, uh, Commissioner LaChe said about the engagement. And, uh, and I think frequency is key, and I think meeting people where they are. In Sagatuck, it's the front of the post office. It's somewhere where food is served. That's where people generally find people. And, um, I just think about ways to meet people where they are. I think about Saturday mornings with coffee. Have, I, I'm sure there's probably at least a couple of places in town here that, uh, would open their doors to host just people sitting and talking, you know, kind of like we've been talking about. I think uh, engagement is difficult because we, what I've learned and since being on council, being involved in, in any civic activity is that I think the world revolves around the things I do, but I frankly, ninety percent of the people in town don't really, they're not engaged. It's, it's the, uh, we call ourselves political junkies, is what some of us call it anyway. So I think we've got to get out of that, and I think it's important for us, uh, not, and I'm speaking in terms of what we need to talk about tonight with a, with a waterfront discussion, also for the, um, short-term rentals. And, um, I, I was telling Chairman Mans before the meeting, after the short-term rental comes, comes back with these recommendations and, and the council considers it, City Planning Commission, then council considers it. I would really be disappointed if someone came after me and said, I had no idea this was going on. No one ever came to talk with me. So I think that's my personal goal here as well as with that, to make sure that we engage with folks. Also, too, something else that came up when the short-term rental task force was being discussed and formed, one of our fellow, one of my fellow council members um, asked if the task force begins to identify immediate opportunities for improvement or changes that don't require zoning changes, don't require fee schedule changes, don't require things that would require legislative action, but just require enforcement, for instance, or things like that. Candles come back to council sooner rather than later for immediate action. And, and I would imagine that there's probably been some things, especially start talking about all the different things that people find problems with short-term rentals, there's probably some that are very simple. Like the one I've heard from recently is for people is tell the damn short-term rental property owners to pull their garbage cans in. Or not to put them out three days before. That's something that people notice. And so something like that could easily be addressed if that's coming up. So, um, yeah, I would ask that just if the task force finds things like that, bring it forward to council. No sense to wait if, if we don't need to. Again, thank you to our servers on that. It's, um, I really look forward to the results. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, very good comments there. And, you know, the idea of possibly bringing, so I think Holly and I, after today's meeting, we're talking about when we do create the survey, if every task force member goes through and kind of ranks themselves as what they find is most important. And if we look, went through it, and everyone is a hundred percent agreement that this is a good idea, then maybe we can, like we were saying, let's, let's just take it off the table. Maybe we'll just move it forward, and then we just continue to address on the ones that, um, you know, that we have more discussion on. But I feel good on that. Anything else?
I did have one housekeeping type question. I feel like time is flying by. I can't believe it's June already. And I was just wondering how you feel about the, how the timing is going. I think we, I know, I think it is the short-term rental task force only a six-month.
Yeah, we, we owe recommendations to the planning commission and council in September, September twenty-first, I think. So,
Okay.
So, yes, and we will talk with the task force at the next, next meeting, kind of getting people's heads around what needs to happen between then, like, what's the deliverable, and then backing up sort of what the process for us to get to that will be.
Okay.
Yeah, because the idea is that it would come from the task force to us, hopefully by our September meeting. If it's not by September, we'll, we'll either do a special meeting or be the October one, then we would have one or two meetings to kind of put together our idea of form. It depends on what we decide to do. If we, if we end up getting recommendations that we want to actually start to look at our zoning ordinances and whether or not short-term rental should be allowed in this zone, and should you limit it in this zone but not in this zone, well, then that won't be able to go to council immediately, because that's going to require a lot of work going back and rewriting, you know, ordinances and zoning. If it's just a matter of making recommendations, you know, that can be implemented easily. So I think that we, you know, it's going to be prior multi-step before we get everything to council.
Yeah, I would think we would want to provide counsel with an overview of, I mean, because some stuff will be really hard. I mean, depending on what we decide to do, some stuff could be pretty labor-intensive to get to the finish line, but at least give counsel a, an, an overview of what the recommendation is.
And I think.
Is that Ryan, does that make sense?
Yeah, so I mean, obviously we'll kind of have a report, recommendations from the task force, but yeah, McKenna's gonna continue on with after that, and with, with, with you and the council to, uh, you know, put pen to paper and, and, uh, write up any change, changes if there are any, and then, uh, take it to that, that public hearing process here, if it's, you know, zoning changes, and then, uh, to the city council after that.
Right. And I think some of the things like Russ was saying would either be at that, because my feeling is there's gonna be many items we're gonna recommend that really won't require anything other than just saying, hey, we're gonna change our application, or you're gonna change, you know, things that wouldn't require public hearings, because some of the stuff may, so. But it's, at least we're moving forward on it. And I think timeline, at first I was concerned, but after today's meeting, when I see the majority of people feeling like they want to move to really start to try to talk about, you know, the next steps of getting the public engagement so that they can really say, okay, how do we want to address some of this? You know, I start to get a feel that they're ready to at least spend the majority of August in that hole, you know, what, how do we move?
Yeah, no, that's great. I, um, and, and, and I wasn't asking the question because I think we should feel, you know, like that's a, an absolute drop dead date. I definitely think it's more important to get the work done right, even if it goes out a little bit further.
I feel good.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think really getting everything done, done is gonna take time, but I think we can certainly have a vision for what we want to do and what it will take to get there. Um, and then Ryan gets to probably do the hard work.
We all will.
You will too.
Once we have it, then it will, you just start laying out saying, this is how, what will have to happen in the timeline. Anything else on short-term rental? That will conclude all business, which will move us then to the new business. You know, the, obviously, we didn't have any cases in front of us this month, but we thought it still was important for us to kind of get together and talk about the whole public engagement on the waterfront, because just like on the short-term rental, we are running up against, you know, kind of a, a timeline, and we know it's summer. And I think, you know, Ryan wants to kind of walk you through, you know, what McKenna and them have tried to do, and I believe all of us kind of furnished him with, survey questions or comments on from last month's meeting.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Chair. After your, your last meeting, that, the task force had homework, and so did you, and you all completed your homework assignment. So thank you for that. Last meeting, uh, Mr. Drosick, who's on Zoom this evening, uh, kind of presented to you, uh, a draft, uh, list of survey questions. You all provided your feedback on that, as well as some other thoughts on, uh, uh, community engagement. So Mr. Drosick took that feedback, um, and then, uh, put that together in, uh, the form that's before you, uh, this evening. So I'm gonna turn it over to him to kind of walk through that, and then I think, uh, he's looking to kind of, uh, kind of finalize maybe a, uh, community engagement plan with the planning commission tonight that we can work off of. Uh, then certainly you can kind of provide you an update and where he's at with, uh, his assessment. I know he's been working along on that as well, so. It's okay, Mr. Chair, to turn it over to Dave.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Hey, is he unmuted?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Um, well, I, I was very interested to hear about the, uh, the progress with the short-term rental task force and the, uh, the public input, uh, strategies. I, I think we could have a very similar conversation about the public input required for the, the waterfront project as well. So, um, I think that's, uh, I, I, I talked to Ryan the other day a little bit about, um, whether or not these efforts could, um, play off each other in terms of, of the public involvement. We felt at that time that it might cause more confusion to have, um, you know, dueling topics at, at, uh, same meeting. So I don't really know if there'd be an opportunity for that. Maybe in, in terms of getting the word out in newsletters or, or, or other, um, ways, uh, maybe we can, we can tag on, um, opportunities, uh, you know, for other events just in terms of public notice. Uh, but, uh, for now, um, you do have the community survey in front of you. I, I did incorporate probably about ninety percent of the input to some, some of the input was, uh, you know, related to each other. So there are some similar comments from, from different planning commission members. So, uh, some of the, uh, the changes might not look exactly as you suggested, but I, I hope the, uh, your, the intent has been met with, with all of the, uh, the questions. Again, so we have, we clarified the residency required, uh, residency questions, uh, clarified the location in terms of the different areas of the city. How do you use the water fronts, uh, the features of the waterfront area that are most important to you, um, the, the priority topics of study. Uh, we had a number of, of questions, whether you agree or disagree with a certain type of development or a certain type of building. Building height, I think we, uh, we, we really have, um, uh, two questions, uh, dedicated to building height. Uh, one for the east side, one for the west side. So I think that was a great suggestion, uh, because height is certainly one of the, the main topics of concern. And, uh, then we have, uh, three open-ended questions at the end. Uh, the, you know, what do you, uh, other communities, what are model communities that you, uh, is example that we can learn from, uh, what are, what are the big ideas you might have for the waterfront? And then lastly, what are the most significant concerns that you have? So, um, I, I think it was, it's great to have an, an opportunity for people to express those, you know, the answers to the open-ended questions at the end, uh, just in case that, uh, we didn't hit anything, uh, on their mind in the first several questions. So, uh, with that, um, I'd love to hear your comments on the, uh, the second draft of the survey. Um, I think from here, then I, I'm also working on, on the, the, uh, visual preference survey. Uh, so that's gonna be, um, another online platform survey to where we have, I would say probably thirty or forty images to where it's very simple. It'd be whether you, uh, prefer this image or you do not prefer it. And then there'd be, if, if they wanted to say why, they could provide that answer why. And it would be important so to, to say that, you know, would you prefer this image in the context of waterfront development in the city of Sagatuck? Uh, so they, they may like a, a certain building type, uh, just in general, but it might be something they like in Grand Rapids or something they might like in some other city. So we want to be very clear that you do prefer this image as, you know, if this was situated on the, on the east side of the river, on the west side of the river. Uh, so that is in the works, and, um, I have been working on collecting a number of images, uh, for that survey. So, um, and then lastly, the third component of the public input process is gonna be an open house, uh, or, or, um, opportunities, uh, your pop-ups at, at some of your, your events. I, I know one of the planning commission members mentioned, uh, a few different city events that we could have a table, uh, just to take input or answer questions. We could also do an, an open house or a town hall similar to what you were discussing for short-term rentals. Um, with that, I would suggest that we have, you know, half of that be open house with stations, and then the other half be a public presentation, and then possibly question and answer at the end. I think that would be important to, to host that, um, after we have the survey results in, and after you have the, uh, the assessment, um, in, in, in your hands. Uh, so, so we could give an update on the surveys and of the assessment, uh, you know, during that, that, uh, the formal presentation at the open house town hall meeting. Uh, so a, a lot to take in tonight. Um, I think if we could at least uh, get through the survey and, uh, get that posted in the, in the, uh, hopefully the next week or so, I, I prefer. Uh, I think it would be best if we had that open for at least three weeks, maybe four. So that would put us in, in mid-July. Uh, I think at the same time, if you get the, the visual preference out and, and you follow a similar timeframe. Um, then I think the big question is, is the open house, when will we do that? And, uh, I think we, we're kind of in the same position as the short-term rental, uh, task force, and to where we have a lot of this, uh, work that we still need to, to complete before we open it up to that public opportunity. So, um, I mean, we certainly could do less formal pop-ups at, at, at events, uh, but if we have a formal open house, I, I would think that would be a, a late July timeframe or even early August.
I would agree. And comments as far as, have you, has everyone had a chance to look through the survey? And the changes, were there other ideas of, as people are taking notes here, you should want to share with us as well as Dave?
Yeah, I just had a couple of, um, uh, more graphical or, um, edits.
Yeah, I just had a couple of, um, uh, more graphical or, um, edits that I'll just, I'll, I'll give to the, um, deputy clerk and just let them take that. It's nothing, nothing that would be overall affecting anything, but just more corrections. No, I thought it was great. I think the survey is great. Um, and, 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 um, when we get the survey out to people, I assume this will be online. David, is that correct? Is that how you normally do this? What, what's the method by which you?
Yes, this, this will be an online platform. Um, you know, that, that's the best way to, to collect the data. Um, I, we should probably have paper copies at city hall, um, or if, if, if staff is available to, if, if you had an extra computer out, so if someone wanted to stop in and fill out the survey on a city computer, uh, you, in, in Ryan's office or at the, uh, the clerk's office, something like that. Um, or you could have a handful of paper copies there. Uh, the only downside of the paper copies is, is the, the data entry process. But I, I wouldn't expect that you would have more than, you know, five percent of the results, uh, survey, surveys, uh, as paper copies. I think a lot of people would do this online.
Yeah, thank you. And, and, and I do agree that there should be some paper copies available for people to pick up. And I've got some people that live on my block who are not online, period. And I'd love to put a hand, I'd love to put a copy of, these are full-time residents. I'd love to put a copy of this in their hands. So they have an opportunity to, and a matter of fact, I'll try to collect it from them and bring it back so it could be entered in data. But, but again, I think we have to make sure it gets in everybody's hands at once they see it.
Present, how do you prevent duplicates?
I want it.
How do you prevent duplicates?
Oh.
Uh, with duplicates, um, so I, I would propose this through, through Survey Monkey. And, uh, so it's an online, uh, survey platform. Um, there's an option to allow only one survey response per IP, per IP address, um, or you could allow for multiple. So, um, I, I get that question a lot. It's, it's, it is somewhat hard to, you know, to say, it's a, to, to answer that. If, if we, we can restrict ones, once each IP address, but, um, that would restrict, uh, you know, a husband and wife or, or a family member from, um, uh, responding if it's a family member already did. So, uh, sometimes we just have to, you know, take it a, as, as input and, um, I don't think anyone's going to really try to stack the deck, but, uh, we, if, if I download the data, I can see if there are 15 responses from a certain IP address, we can flag that as, as, as a, you know, potential, uh, foul play.
So you can do that? Like if you got 15? Okay. The, I'm asking this actually from the short-term rental, because I think there would be more temptation to stuff the ballot box with that than offer to the waterfront.
Now, David, are we thinking that this being done as a, like a Survey Monkey or actually putting it on the city of Sagatuck website or both?
Do both.
Uh, yes, there would be a, a fairly customized, um, uh, address, the website. So it's, uh, surveymonkey.com slash Sagatuck or, or, uh, a waterfront assessment. So we, we can make it so it's a, uh, something that's a, that someone could easily write down and use at home, or we could post that link on, on the city's website, Facebook or other.
If they go to the website, they can just hit the link and it would take them to the Survey Monkey.
Yes, yes.
Now, another idea that I was thinking, I think it came up in one of our earlier meetings. E- even though we maybe don't want to put the survey actually in the newspaper, because we don't want to encourage to have them paper, but we could, you know, could we take out an ad in the commercial record that actually shows all questions? So that people know what we're asking and then say, if you would like to complete this survey, go to the city's website, follow the link and then answer it online. But at least it's almost like how Holly did with the short-term rental. It's letting them know the things that we're talking about. Not everyone reads the commercial record, but again, we're talking about how do you get in front as many people as possible? And I could easily see kind of like Coastal Alliance does sometimes where you take out a whole page and you have a page that just, you know, is, is our survey question and you let them know when, how long the survey is available and how to access it.
Well, I'm, I'm, um, I'm just, um, a bit concerned about making sure that all residents have the opportunity. And I know personally that there may not be many, but there are probably, I don't know, a hundred, um, who don't, don't do online anything.
Right.
And they want to have a voice in this, uh, both in terms of especially short-term rentals. I don't know if they are as passionate about waterfront development.
I wonder if, yeah.
I mean, the, the, I mean, certainly, yeah, we can definitely put an ad in the paper and I mean, we can certainly let folks know that they can pick up a paper copy here too, as part of the.
Right. You can say a paper copy here. I mean, technically I guess you could have them fill.
Have people call city hall and, um.
Send them a copy.
Happy to mail them one. Yeah.
Do we think those, that if we did, commercial record, you know, and, and adding commercial record, and actually it might make sense to combine, to do, publicize both of the surveys if the timing worked. Then maybe we could get flyers and demands and maybe some stores. And again, say, if you, you know, if you haven't gotten, you can find it online here, we could put a QR code. Um, or if you want to, you know, call city hall, we can get you a paper copy, something like that.
And I would, pardon me, I would definitely suggest putting the URL on the paper form itself so people can see it.
Yeah.
Um, and I'll personally commit to once that paper form is ready, I, I will canvas my four blocks and I will knock on doors and hand them to people. I know of at least five homes that are people that are just not online, which I want to make sure they get them, but the other ones, just to call attention to it.
Right.
Yeah, I'm willing to commit to do that. It's.
Yeah. And I would also say that, I mean, I don't want to put a lot of work on us, but David, if, if we got, say, 50 to 60 ones that were, you know, filled out by hand. I realize someone has the input of Sarah and those guys. I mean, I could say, I'll, I'll come in for an hour, give me a stack and I'll sit there and just interim, you know, in Survey Monkey. Um, you know, we'll figure out a way to get it so that it's actually, everything is in there electronic wise without putting undue burden, at least, you know, I will be open to doing that.
That's actually what we do at All Saints when we're doing parish surveys, uh, because we have a significantly large, um, set of parishioners who don't, aren't comfortable with electronics. So they, we take it, they fill it out, we bring it back and we enter the data.
Right.
So.
I would agree. Um, also just some thoughts in terms of how to get this in front of people. Music in the park on Wednesday nights immediately comes to mind, waterfront. Uh, there's a lot of people that come there and I think that would be a great place to have. And again, I love the idea, David, of the visuals. Do you like this or this? You know? And whether we have posters or whatever, we just, you know, maybe we have a, have a Sharpie, you just say, put a check mark, whatever. That, those visuals, in my experience, really get people engaged. They really stop and think about it. I hand them a survey, they may or may not return that. But if you give them an opportunity to make a decision while, while they're right there, I think that's great. And I think music in the park is a wonderful opportunity to just get in front of folks. US Post Office, right? Now, again, the post office is the place for a lot of folks. There's a lot of civic engagement goes on there, a lot of political debate, a lot of just people saying hi to each other, but a lot of people go there. Um, and, um, I, those are the two things that, I mean, the kind of my interest is getting in front of people other than knocking on doors.
Cause I agree. I think the music in the parks, a couple of the art festivals. David, I think the one thing that I was concerned with, and I do agree with you that before we go to the expense of doing visuals, we would probably like to have some of the survey results so that we kind of know what the preferences are. So you can kind of pick and choose what to put in the visuals. That's the only thing, if the survey is going to go for two or three weeks and we're talking about getting it out by the first part of July, you're getting the results back. So, you know, the music in the park only goes, what is it? Through Labor Day? The Wednesday's through Labor Day or something, sometime in September. The art festivals happen in July and August. What's that? Oh yeah, the Fourth of July one. So that's, you know, we may end up missing, if we wait to do the visual until we have all the survey results back, we may miss some of the key chances of the events that take place on the waterfront. So I don't know how we would try to get around that.
If we do it at, say, uh, music in the park or some other big event, how do we keep, you know, somebody from Indianapolis?
Right.
Um, putting a check mark on a picture? I mean, do we, do we care? I mean, I, I would see, I could see people being tourists at music in the park going, oh, I'll.
Right.
But in some, you, you, uh, beverages and, and, uh, and it's, you know, I mean, i- is it necessary to be, you know, blanketing public venues and the, and never found this just talked to my head. If I am using the park, I kind of like, just want to be relaxing. I don't want, you know, it's going to give me a flyer and say, hey, Mark, here's an opportunity, you, you know, do the QR code another time. That's one thing. If you hand me a flyer and I'd say, I don't want the flyer or a hand. But if you're actually asking people to do the surveys at these events, um, I, it seems like there's plenty of opportunities for people to think about it and do it on, and if they want to, so.
Th- those are some great questions and, and what I would counter is ask the person where they're from, right? Where are you from? Do I know, you know, that way you can kind of gauge if someone is trying to game in or just playing around. Two is.
And, and I'm sorry, who's going to be asking that question?
Well, one, whoever's going to be at the boards. I mean, they wouldn't just be sat there without anybody there to represent what's going on, because people are going to have questions. I mean, I'm willing to volunteer to be there for, you know, an hour or two to kind of introduce it and have some information there for them. And I'd say, hey, by the way, welcome, um, before you may, are you from town or you, you where, where? It's kind of like having a nominating petition, right? Are you registered voter or not? Um, and then, um, I don't view this as being a canvassing effort. I view this as being, it's there.
Right.
And people can see something, they come up and they're curious.
They know that we were out there, we were trying to gather.
Yeah. Cause I agree, handing them a survey seems a little, I, I don't know.
No.
But to have a QR code printed on there to say, if you'd like to complete the survey, there's a QR code there, just scan that and you can complete the survey online. I think, I view this as more just being it's there and it's offered as opposed to canvassing people.
And also give the information that if they don't want to do the electronically, they can come pick one up at city hall.
Yeah.
So that's a good piece of information. A lot of people go to that. It's at the waterfront. They'll be thinking about.
If we were at the waterfront for the music in the park or art festival and somebody comes up and they want to give their opinion on the visual, well, they're a tourist in town. They're in town because they like the town, they're spending money. And so in my opinion, I would like to hear what they have to say. I mean, it's, at least I can kind of note it, you know, as, do, do they want to see, you know, four, four or five story buildings downtown.
As long as we track it different from residents, because I think residents rule, rule, I mean, get a bigger say.
But I think it's, if you get public engagement and then we have a public forum, and if you're hearing the same things from the residents that you kind of heard from the public engagement, then you can kind of, you know, say, hey, we really had an opportunity to hear from almost every people who live here, people who are tourists as well as, at least. I think that kind of, you know, piggybacks well. And I do agree, Mark, it's like, it's, you're not going to have, have an announcement like at music on the park on Wednesday and say, oh, over in this corner, we have, but everybody, please take, take time here this evening to go by. Maybe they can say, hey, if you are interested, it's there, but it's not like it's, uh, you know, a requirement. I think there will be people though, that would actually mill over to take a look at it. And at least people I know here in town, many of them have really liked to express their opinion. So I could see them wanting to come by and.
People, people set up an hour before it starts, so they'll be milling around and see something.
Right. Yeah.
Chairman Vance, you make a excellent point. This, though I think residents are the key constituency that we should be concerned about. People come to Sagatuck for the beauty of the waterfront. So they may have an opinion, they may see it, they may, they, they may see something and they may choose to engage or not. But if they look and they say, you know, I do have an opinion about this, I would like to hear that.
Right.
I think that is important.
And I think that's sort of the way that we would actually get some of that is if you were out in the, you know, at the events.
And I was thinking along those lines, it seems like for the visual survey, the first three questions we're asking in this survey, we could just ask the residency questions. That way we know who's answering them. That might just be useful information anyway to know that with the different, if the different perspectives are coalescing around different views.
Dave, what about, and I'm just throwing some things out here as I'm thinking, like when we were talking about the short-term rental, if we were giving people like little tabs to put on their, what, what, what their preferences, what they like. If we ask upfront, are you a resident or are you a tourist? If you're a resident, you get a blue tab. If you're a tourist, you get a green tab and then they put them on and that way we know, oh, this was a residence comment. This was somebody, a non-resident or a tourist. Maybe we have three colors. So like if it is truly just a tourist from out of state, they get, you know, a red, you have a green and a blue. Um, and so that, that's how we could actually, you know, monitor that.
Also, we need to think about the west side of the river as well. We're focused on the east side and the west side is part of this process. So is there an event or something that we could do on the west side of the river that would engage people? I mean, Bald Head's a natural one. There's a lot of people that climb the stairs and go to the park. So I just, I, I do want to make sure that side of the river is not ignored because it frequently gets.
Yeah. No, and maybe that, you know, one of the things I was thinking when we were talking about the park, the concert in the park is, we could, we also talked about, I know, setting up that stand, Ryan, that you, do you remember that stand you came up with? The, the, I don't know, sand is the right word.
Sandwich board.
The sandwich board, yes. But I know, I think we talked about that. Maybe we put that at Mount Baldy with the QR code. I don't know.
Just regarding, I can check, Mount Baldy has a public event coming up. I want to say it's in a couple of weeks for this new exhibit that they're, um, putting on.
History center?
Yeah, the history center over there at Mount, at Mount Bald Head. You know, so I don't think we'll have time, you know, before that, because I want to say that's like in two weeks. It's like a Thursday night kickoff. But there is, you know, an opportunity, that would be the, in my opinion, the perfect opportunity to have something at the history center there on the west side, because that's probably, you know, center when they're looking across, you know, at our side and we see it on their side. Um, is otherwise, other than that, you know, the place over there, I mean, you have Oxbow, but Oxbow is kind of, uh, most people don't go up into there. The Sagatuck Yacht Club, I know has, if we were going to do any kind of forum over there, I'm a member there. And we have a very large, I mean, their meeting space is larger than, than this room. Um, you know, so there's a possibility that if we wanted to have something on the west side, we could possibly see if we could use their space. And they have the docks and you could kind of be able to.
You're speaking to two board members.
Yeah.
We support that idea. We.
That's true. That's right. Thank you.
I would, I would support that idea.
So it's.
I do think though, that people from the west side come to the side and vice versa. So, I mean, I think that's a nice to have, but I think we'd get a good cross-section of the, we do come over here.
I know we do.
For meetings. And stuff.
Now I live here. I'm in.
We're just trying to put that whole inclusion thing.
That's right.
We're trying to bring people to the yacht club. Who are we kidding?
I do think this is a good survey.
I was getting ready to say, as we're.
Great.
I think it's fine.
Is everyone in agreement that we believe that the survey, um, works for each of us?
Yes.
Nicely done.
Yeah. So David, you'll take this and work with, like Ryan and the, the clerks on trying to put it into a Survey Monkey and then a link for our websites. And then also for us to send out in our, um, citywide email.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Could we also start getting a schedule together? We talked about different events and, um, I think it's important to get those on the calendar. I'm willing to commit some of my time to, uh, go to one of these to represent the planning commission in this effort. Um, so if we can start getting some dates down, most of these events are already scheduled. So I think that sooner rather than later. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah. Yeah, I would say at least bring in a calendar so we kind of would have, we know that the music in the park is on Wednesdays. I just can't remember like when's the last Wednesday that it occurs. Like you said, the July 4th festival is coming up. I know that there was an art. There's another art show that's like in August, I want to say that was on the city council agenda recently.
Yeah.
Phoenician night. Now, of course, you know, Phoenician, that's an interesting one because there's so much that happens at that. But there, there is a large gathering, but that's the Phoenician night, David, is at the end of July. So we might be able to have something by then, because that's the July.
Also on the waterfront. So it's.
It's on the waterfront at Coughlin Park.
They usually have the craft fair.
And I'm going to, and then the next day you have the dinghy races.
Oh yeah, that's, there's another, that's, uh, yeah.
Right. Yeah. It's probably the one of the largest weekends for people coming into town. Um, again, the Phoenician at night, it does kind of turn in. If you get there, like if you, if we were going to do it, I'd say only have stations there from like five to maybe eight or eight 30, because from somebody who's been there later in the evening, you really don't want to get a lot of the comments that come in at eight 30 to 11 30.
Yeah, yeah.
Just pointing out. I've worked the beer tit number of times.
And also just to that point, you've got a spot right down below us here that you could simply set something up right in front of city hall. And that could be a nice place for people.
That's true. Yeah. There was people taking photographs outside when I walked in tonight. So it's.
Yeah, if we can get a calendar sooner rather than later, so we can start to go, say, okay, yeah, I can do that one or, and then of course, it sounds like David's got a lot of feedback from us in terms of what we want to see this look like. So I'm excited. I think this is, I, I really am excited about this.
David, do you think that if we, if the survey was still out at, you know, up until the middle of July, that you would be able to have some type of like visual things that we could possibly present with, you know, by the end of July, if, if we were trying to hit some of those. You know, by the end of July, if if we were trying to hit some of those events, like a Venetian?
I mean, in terms of a, a kind of a pop up, uh. Table materials, poster or something for the, uh, the staff. Yeah, I mean, I think, um. What we could do is have the both surveys available and maybe we even keep those open through the end of July, just so that's. We're, when we're getting the word out at these events, we're also letting them know the survey is available and they could do it online as well. Um, but in terms of, uh, materials that you could have at that, at that table, um, I can get those ready in the next, I I would say, two, three weeks or so. Um, I I can shoot to make sure that we, we make, uh. You know, deadlines for for all these events on the July schedule.
That'd be great. And obviously, if you get, I'm looking right now at the date for our meeting next month. But if you had it completed, you could forward it to Ryan. Ryan, you could send it out to us. I'm sure each of us would be willing to kind of take a look at it. And give any feedback. Before we even meet. Uh, because I don't think it really requires us to meet and approve it if he was going to put it together as a. You know, actually hard copy. So like initially, maybe David, you send over. Just the. Um, electronic version of what it may look like. I don't know, is that, if that's what you're thinking.
Were there? You're referencing the, uh, like a presentation board then, or the?
Right.
Okay.
Again, it's. It's our next meeting.
The twentieth. July twentieth.
Yeah, so it's July twentieth, so the following week. Is Venetian. So if we were trying to target that, we'd probably need to at least have our comments in on the boards before our meeting. So either we have to do a special meeting or we could just do it. You know, by getting our comments back to Ryan, like we did the homework assignment.
Yeah, and from my perspective, is it, is action needed on any of this? Do we need to have a meeting to take? I I don't think so. I think we've given some really good feedback and then it sounds like David's got his ideas and to get this done. And then I think the. Electronic communications, we can say, yeah, this looks good and then, um, start to get, because I think the sooner we can get to some of these events with information, I think the better.
Yeah, I I think. We can certainly share with you what Dave's come up with. I think, you know. As our consultant with us, I think we, we, we. Sounds like you're trusting what he's going to come up with. We certainly can share that with you and then. Uh, with him indicating that, you know, um, you know, the the higher side, that it might take him a few weeks to get that board and those materials, uh, together. Um, I'll start looking at dates after. You know, that would fall after that three week period, um, and and some, some events and then, um. It sounds like there's a desire from some planning commissioners to to man some of these, these booths or tables for certain periods of time. Uh, so, you know, we can get a a calendar, some dates together and then ask you when you're available and plug some of you in. Um, so at least, you know, staff, uh, to a certain extent, a little assist and, um, and then go from there, so.
Right.
No, I think, I think that actually would work and it, no, I, that's what I was kind of getting to. I don't think it would require, since we're not voting on anything, it doesn't take public comment. That we could do it a lot like we did with the survey. And we could all give her, look at it. And if we say, oh, I think we'd like to seize this maybe slightly changed, this is, we send it back to Ryan, they'll evaluate it. So that we may have something that we'd be able to kind of have as a table stand, you know, by those events.
I like that.
Was there other ideas that you wanted to cover, David, with us here tonight in regards to public engagement or? The waterfront itself?
I I think that's very helpful. Uh, this gives me direction to prepare, uh, both surveys, uh, the table boards. And then, um, the assessment report, I would expect that we could discuss that at the next planning commission meeting. So. Um, I'm shooting to have that done in the next, um, two or three weeks so that you have enough time to review that ahead of your, um. Think the July twentieth planning commission meeting.
Correct.
So so that's all, that's happening in the background right now and you'll see that deliverable, uh, here sometime midway between this meeting and the next.
Fantastic, thank you.
And assessment report? And I'm sorry, what are we going to be looking at next month's meeting that he's going to prepare within the next two or three weeks? I missed what, an assessment report?
Uh, yes, so there'll be a, uh, an assessment reports. And, uh. So if you, I can reset it, but the, uh, April thirteenth, uh, scope memo. Uh, included the report, which we're going to look at, um, you know, what the current zoning allows. Um, looking at best practices from other communities. Um. She asked, uh. Basically seeing i- if the current zoning is going to implement the the city's master plan or if it's going to result in something that consists on your vision. Let me see what else is.
Because I think we were also talking about, you know, like we have with affordable zones currently. And each of the zones obviously are set up in a way, they kind of were written to accommodate what's already on. You know, the riverfront, you know, I know I had raised one of the questions, I think so I heard from some other, others. You know, as to, do we really need, you know, four zones? So it's, but first we got to kind of take a look at, well, what's the difference between? You know, residential zone or commercial zone one versus two. Um, so I think that's what you're talking about, David, right? Is kind of looking at where the similarities and where where the differences are and why.
Uh, yes, and, um, well, I guess the the first. Assessment for this, uh, for the upcoming meeting next month, uh, before parks, the the. Uh, area of study, uh, character assessment. Uh, a development and redevelopment assessment. Uh, master plan and zoning assessment and best practices review. So, uh. I think at that time, this report will not have the the final recommendations about how we move forward. Uh, but the final recommendations, I believe, would come in in August, uh, after you had the chance to review this report. And after we had the the benefit of public input. So.
Absolutely.
Yep, in August, then we would have, uh, uh, more concrete zoning recommendations, uh, like what was re- referenced about consolidating zoning districts or. Creating an overlay or so on. So that will be, uh, assessed over the next couple of weeks and that will also be based on public input.
No, and David, I was not suggesting that we were looking at the idea of changing the zoning. I was just saying that. Before we could ever even discuss it at some point, we have to kind of all make certain that we have a clear understanding as to what the differences are in our existing zones.
Correct. So the the assessment report for next month, uh, certainly will, um, compare the different zoning districts. I I think, um. Um, one of the planning commission members said, uh, uh, to provide a side by side table concerning the. Uh, uses and dimensional requirements, uh, for the the four. Zoning districts involved in the area focus. So I think that's a great idea. That would be part of the assessment. And, um, and again, yeah, just, I was just giving examples of of ways you could amend the zoning ordinance. Uh, we don't know what we're going to do yet. Uh, but we'll have those recommendations in August.
Got it. Um, also thinking too about the short term rental task force. I know they're not quite there yet, but. There would seem to me to be some opportunity to at least inform. The short term rental task force of this assessment and some of the things that we may be looking at as a planning commission. Not that you had a decision point, but that may have some opportunity to influence or perhaps maybe get some thought to. Uh, because there could be some suggestions that short term rentals be. Prohibited from certain districts, for instance. And I, so what I'm trying to avoid is a situation where we go through this process and then the short term rental task force comes back with a recommendation on something that. We took action on. So I'm just trying to, would like to avoid where we make a decision, then all of a sudden we're countered. Did you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I.
So I don't know how.
All be listening for that and. You know, yeah, I, a good point.
Any other comments from fellow commissioners?
I did have one thought going back to the public hearing. I just was curious. It sounds like we're, or public, um. Input, it sounds like we're planning to, uh, piggyback on. Existing events, but do we also want to have a separate standalone? Event that just focuses. On the issue? I don't know, just a thought.
I would think that there's a benefit to that, in in my opinion, that. Especially if we have one, you know, that takes place regarding the short term. Rental and we see that people are interested in coming and participating, because it's one thing to have it at a event. But to be able to tell people, hey, this evening or this, you know, whatever. Date, you have an opportunity to come to this location. And, you know, and look at the boards or share with other, you know, commission and city council members as well as, you know, uh, city staff. I I can see that being a positive.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and and I have some thoughts about how we could do that, um, and do it outside of City Hall. And do it from the waterfront.
Makes sense. And then we would just, I guess we would just publish that whenever we come up with that date.
Well, yeah, and I I think, uh, David kind of mentioned it, we probably. We're going to schedule that, probably want to get all the survey data, so that way we can kind of present that and, uh, you know, what what was the outcome? What were the findings of that? We could present that in that format and then kind of. Uh, have some further discussion from there about potential, um, recommendations. So I I think, um, we certainly can. Uh. Plan on doing that and then probably at your next meeting, um, we'll be getting towards the end of the survey period and then could look at maybe setting a date to to do that.
Okay, sounds good.
I like it. Other. Comments or suggestions, ideas? David, you good? David, are you good?
Uh, yes, I really appreciate the input and this gives me good direction to. Um, prepare the surveys and, uh, the materials for for July and then, um. A- as as Ryan suggested, I think once we have that all. Um, finalized through through July, then we schedule something in August, uh, with the results of of, uh, of the work from July.
Great.
And with that, we would then conclude new business with tonight's agenda, communications. I didn't receive any. I don't believe Sarah and Ryan, you had any?
Nope.
The zoning administrators activity report is in your kit and as always, it's. Very well done, very informative. It is getting long, isn't it? That's all the open items that he continues to have.
Yeah, so.
We talk about a living document.
Enforcement use.
I know, I I always read those.
Thank you. So with the report, is any questions or comments for Ryan or the staff on?
I did, I really scanned quickly through it, but I was just curious because there seems to be more. The word new attached to, um, short term rental occasions. Are there more? I, or or did I just misread them? Um, as I scanned.
Yeah, so, uh, if. So the city council a while back asked us to kind of identify if we get a short term rental application, you know, is this a brand new one? Is this something that's renewing? Was it one in the past? Now it's coming back, something along those lines? So if it says new, it means it's it's new in the sense that it would be a new short term rental, uh, for the community. Um, some of them may be on your report, you know, through multiple reports because, you know, we're waiting on, uh, inspections to be completed and so that processes take a little while. The number of applications has slowed down, you know, uh, pretty dramatically since the discussion related to the moratorium. We saw a big influx. Um. And then since then, you know, we've had, we've had some, but, um, yep.
And in terms of enforcement, are there? Is there any particular enforcement issues that stand out? Just in terms of volume?
Um, I. I I think the biggest thing that we're working through with some properties are, you know, if they have accessory dwelling units and, you know, a single family home on the property. So that's been a big one that we've kind of been, um, working through and then following up on some of those. Um. You know, there was one recently that, uh, they discovered was being rented and and so we were. Working with the owner to bring that into compliance. A lot of them were just working on making sure we get their in inspection done. Some of the. Properties, you know, applied to be a short term rental, but then when the fire departments reached out, they weren't ready for their inspection for a variety of reasons, which, you know, really the ordinance says that, you know, it has to meet the help. And safety codes at all times, which means when you apply, you're saying it's ready. I mean, you're signing. An application saying that it meets the fire department inspection, so. Or requirements. And so with those types of situations where they've been put off, we're we're kind of taking a harder line and saying, look, if it's not ready. Um, you know, you'll have to reapply at a later day kind of a thing, so.
Okay.
Right. And if that's. Get on the reports, we'll move to our last public comment section. At this public comment section, anyone is willing, has. Um, microphone is open to anyone who would like to come up and address. You can speak on any topic. You can keep it limited to three minutes. You just state your name. And where you live. Anyone here? No, anyone online? No. I think it's all our people online. So that will conclude the public comments. Any commissioner comments here this evening?
Chairman Mans, um. It, um, it was brought to council that, uh, there's several terms coming up. Several of our commission members' terms are coming up. July first and, um, Commissioner Broker and Commissioner Mans's terms are coming up and I understand they have both resubmitted an application. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So they probably don't want that publicized, but I think it's, and there's, there's an open application.
There is an open.
But I understand they have both submitted applications. I'm very pleased by that, so.
I think it's great that the clerk, you know, n- noticed that, um, that was the process and that we're following. What we're supposed to do, so kudos to Jamie.
Kudos to Jamie, yeah.
Absolutely. Because I think when it first came up, somebody asked if Ann or I was stepping down when they had the opening. I said, well, in the past, I think they just automatically, if you were willing to stay on, they just reappointed you. And then Jamie and Ryan and Sarah kind of realized that, no, you should still have to go through and apply and anybody else who's interested. And then the mayor and the city council would then approve. Uh, you know, so, so we're not a given yet. We still have.
Such as because you never know.
Do you get to interview yourself, Steve?
That would be a good one. I'd be afraid of even answering my own questions. No, it's, I think it's, but I do, I do appreciate that.
Um, an observation, um, we spent a lot of time. Knocking around how. To get public input on the waterfront. And this is purely anecdotal from me. I think people in town. People who live in town, let me put it that way. Care a lot more about the short term rental. Issue than whether there are three story, four story, no story buildings along the waterfront and that that may be an education thing they need to learn about the waterfront. But I I hope that. The same type of effort for public input is to put towards. How people feel about short term rentals in this town as we just talked about. An exhaustive way to drag information, opinions out of people. Um, at every, you know, whether they're walking past City Hall or sitting listening to a concert. Um, and, uh, so it's just an observation that I hope going forward that that there's that similar effort put towards. Um, gaining public input for the short term rentals as, uh, seemingly we're going to be doing for. How people feel about development or lack of development of the waterfront.
Notice.
Thank you. Agree.
Yep.
Agreed.
I will also say, though, that I think that. There'll be it. When these questions go out and people are forced to think about what could happen on the waterfront.
Mm hmm.
By these questions in terms of development and five story buildings or three story buildings, I think that will generate some. Um. Interest.
Sure, I I agree. I I think there's a lot of people who. Ignorant, not as in ignorant as in simply uninformed or unaware. Um, so.
But I couldn't agree more in terms of short term rentals. If there was one message that came through loud and clear. From everyone is about getting public input and short term rentals.
Back on.
Everybody's input.
Yeah, and I think it's great that we're getting a lot of public input on the waterfront, because I think one of the, we'll try to, because I think one of the reasons that people. Are interested in short term rentals is. We let it go as far as we did. So I think there's probably the same interest in town right now if we. Let development, you know.
Right.
Run amok on the waterfront.
And there are people in town who still will tell you. Who will grimace and and about the the, uh, condominiums that were built on, uh, along Culver Street, uh, along Lake Street. Um, I I know a woman who calls them the Chinese wall, for example, I mean, it's, so. Um, there there will be interest, but I think people have to be made aware that there needs to be interest, so.
Great, yeah. Thank you.
Will agree. And I, but I do think that, like, we had talked, Ryan talked with David, I know we talked with Holly. The public engagement is some, is definitely somewhat different between the short term rental and the waterfront. Waterfront's much more of a visual and it is kind of like, what do you want to see? Short term rental, you know, many times we'll have someone who will just come and say, oh, I don't think we should have them, or I think you can't, you don't make any changes. But they haven't really had a chance to think through or understand all the ramifications of either decision. So it really is more of an education and. And and trying to help them kind of move along. And maybe they're they're thinking if they're on one side or the other. Um, and I think that's what we're going to try to do with the surveys, gather that, but then also in the forums, you know, kind of kind of put it out.
I was with, um. Uh, two people who. Uh, live in Douglas and, um. Care very much about. Douglas as well as Sagatuck and the whole issue of short term rentals came up today based on development that's beginning to take place in Douglas. So, um, just a lot of, um. emotions running high, let's say.
Yes, and many of them are also aware I had an opportunity to, um, meet the new person who's the, uh, has Ryan's job for the city of Douglas and they're watching a lot of the things that we're doing here within Sagatuck very closely, but the residents of whom I'm hearing are also watching and are asking, well, if they do anything or what, are we going to follow? You know, it's also an issue here, you know, it's um, and that, that had to do with waterfront as well as short-term rental, at least as far as what he was saying. Because let me tell you, some of those new developments they're talking about are just geared towards second home investment, short-term rental ownership.
And it's, I had a conversation with a, uh, Douglas planning commissioner about a month ago and, and I was told very clearly, he said, we're, we're watching you.
Yeah.
We're watching you in a way that we're going to hopefully learn from you, so we can set an example, I think, for our sis, for our sister communities. So, yeah, it, it is being watched.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I thought I'd assumed it, but I like that, yeah, that was confirmation on Wednesday when I was there. Very good. Well, if no additional comments from the commissioner, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor? You need adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, because it's kind of a meeting is, I love it. It's, I feel like we get more done as far as thinking about things, but then just approving a site.